I'd like to call the order of the Springbrough Board of Education meeting Tuesday, September 23, 2014. Roll call?
Anderson?
Here.
Malone?
Here.
Patrani?
Yes.
Regano?
Here.
Stuckey?
And we now have a pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. John, if you're here.
Hi.
Item 1.2, adoption of the agenda, is there a motion to adopt?
So, there's a second?
Second. Question? Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Patrani?
Yes.
Stuckey? Regano?
Yes.
Sorry, I'm not sure what you said.
Motion passes.
I thought you were going to say...
I fired him last week. We should see what his response is when he's fired.
Item 1.3, approval of the September 9, 2014, meeting minutes. There's a motion?
So, there's a second?
Second. Question? Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Patrani?
Yes.
Regano?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item 2.1, Springbrough Education Association report, is there anyone to report?
Yes. You're supposed to bring something for your report.
Item 2.2, Springbrough Classified Employees Association report. Is there anyone to report? So, item 2.3, public participation pre-arranged, I don't believe, doesn't indicate anybody pre-arranged. Okay? 2.4, public participation. We'll move on to item 3.1, the Treasurers' report. Their approval of the August 2014 financial statements. Is there a motion?
So, there's a second?
Second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I had a few questions, I thought. Maybe we can discuss here instead of on email.
Sure.
So, just so I can explain my position on what I understand about the financial reports that you sort of carried over from previous Treasurers', which would be the expense report and the revenue report, I'd say they're pretty similar. So, usually, is that accurate? The revenue history and expense history of the charges is pretty accurate. And usually, what I got out of that is that I can see from one month a year previous to today, for instance, on the revenue report, I can make the presumption that last August, we collected $7 million, this August, we collected $2. But because I've been doing this and previous Treasurers' have informed me that revenue is tax money, it looks like in July, we've got a bigger tax hit. So, what that report, this report is kind of a point in time, doesn't really tell me too much as it relates to progress. So, I think one of the reports you were working on, maybe you perfected it, maybe, I'm looking at it, is this budget to actual. And I know there's probably something I'm missing in this, because I see that we have created a very nice detailed set of monthly projections where the revenues and expenses fill out, which kind of mimic, for the most part, the big numbers on the previous page. And then I look to the end, and I see a total and then a kind of five-year update. I guess I'm just trying to, my question that I asked you about this report, I think you created this and you were using it and kind of catching up, so you were doing a lot of catch-up last year. And so, I didn't ask any questions on it. But what I can't tell, and I guess, and maybe it's my business mind, says that if we have an actual set of expenses, we might have a monthly actual budget. And I think based on our email conversation, you said that that doesn't exist, or I'm paraphrasing, it may not be available, or it's not possible in public education. But I'm trying to figure out how this form can help me understand anything different than what I read before, because this just says that, to me, again, looking at the total line item on the far right, where it says "actual," it looks like we've collected $12 million and spent $30, maybe, if I'm reading right. So, I don't know how to help, I don't know how this, or even comparing it against the May forecast, I don't know if the $23,000, $23 million makes the $7 million means that we thought we were going to collect 23, but we only collected 9.75 million. So, I'm just trying to use this in a way that can help me, so I understand.
Which is showing that out of the May update, we're expecting $23 million in revenue for the fiscal year. So far, we've received $9,750,000. That's just what we've received so far. We get our tax advances in. Now, we can reasonably, you know, I did this at Loveland, too, where we could kind of, and I think this may be what you're asking for, but I'll explain also why it didn't really help us and we went away from doing it at Loveland. We had a grid where we kind of looked at trends of where, when we typically receive the majority of our revenue in which months, and what expenses based off of last year we typically hit during the year in each month. But every, every single month we would do that, it would be way off, because it's all based off of timing. So, if our, so for instance, like you can see, we received in last year, $4 million in revenue in July, and $7 million in August. So, if I would have looked at that, I would have said, okay, so this year, based off of, we'll get more money in state revenue and less money in taxes because of the changes, I would then have probably done more around $5 million in July and, you know, $5 million in August. But it would have happened that way. So, it's all timing, so it doesn't really tell you anything. I mean, our revenues are still going to come in exactly what we think. The state has already established what we're going to get for revenue-wise for the state. That's our second largest, you know, source, and our largest source is our taxes, which we already have the rates from January, so we already know what that's going to be. So, unless our collection goes way down, our revenues, we already know what we're going to get. So, it's just what months they come in is what months they come in. I can't, I can guesstimate when they're going to come in based off of history, but that doesn't mean that's what's going to happen if they're late, if they get it to us early. I mean, it...
Yeah, I just don't know what, I'm just trying to figure out, sitting here as having a fiduciary to say, hey, it looks like we're doing great, or, hey, it looks like we're off on expenses, or, hey, something below, which I know you tell us if we had a big blow-up, I understand that. But I'm just trying to see if we...
Well, if you look, if you look so far from July and August of last year, we received in just under $12 million between July and August. And July and August of this year, we've received in $12.2 million. So, we've received in more.
You're looking at, you're looking at the revenue receipt chart?
Yeah, we're doing the revenue, and then the expenditures, I sent an email out earlier today to explain that, the differences in that, to show where we are over. Those were anticipated increases we already had built into our five years. So, we're right on schedule of what we said in the May forecast we were going to be spending.
So, let me just, for one more minute, if I may, I guess you're looking at the revenue history chart? Is that what you said? So, when I look at that, I see, and again, this is just me looking at it quickly, I can easily see, in 2015 fiscal year, we received $12.25 million. I can easily do the math, that $7 million plus $4 million is roughly $12, but I can't see comparability, I guess. I can do the math, I'm looking for dashboard-type stuff, maybe? And also, if you don't need to do a report for us...
I could probably do something for you to tell you the major differences. For instance, we received 6.25% of state funding last year for the capital, we're receiving 12, actually, 10 and 1/2 this year.
I'm just trying, I guess I'm trying to think about...
That's why there's an increase.
I'm just, I'm trying to think about saving you time, because if this report for me just gives me a snapshot, I just don't know what to do with it, that's all.
Well, the detail is in the rest of the report. It shows you every receipt we've received in for the month. So, you can obviously see that's a lot to go through. 144 pages of expenditures, a lot to go through.
Absolutely.
So, we give you the detail, so that you have that, if you would like to go through line by line and by line, I'd be seeing what we're sending. So, you have access to every single expenditure that we're sending and every single revenue we're receiving in, as well as a combination of what's all happened for that month.
Right.
I'm not sure...
I'm looking at the movement. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Well, what I'm taking away from this is that our anticipated revenue and anticipated expenses are really materializing, as we pretty well, we thought they would. There's going to be some ups and downs based on timing, because we don't control the timing. And while our income on a given month may be lower than we anticipate, we have every reason to think that that's going to catch up at the end of the fiscal year or end of a given period of time. And that's really what I'm taking away from this information.
We're still online, we haven't gotten any emails saying, hey, we're not going to give you $3 million in rollback and home stuff that we're supposed to get. We're going to get all of our revenue in. Sometimes it's a month late, sometimes it's early, it depends on when the state gets around and sending it to us. Just like with bills, if I anticipate, we're going to spend, you know, $500,000 on a textbook adoption this month, and the bill comes in next month, it looks like we saved $5 million this month, and next month, we're going to be $5 million over. It's all timing, that's all it is.
Thank you.
I understand that when you look at a month in isolation, that that's the case. But I'm more concerned about the cumulative effect. At two months into the year, and that's still pretty early, and it would be hard to look at a budget projection for the first two months and the actuals, I guess, and draw from conclusions. But at each month, it gets better. And what's missing in this for me is, where should we be? And I understand that there's fluctuations, I deal with that every day, in fact, that's my job, is to manage these budget spreads, help people develop their budget spreads and manage to their budget, I do it every day. And so, what we try to do, and understanding that there's variations, but we try to have a monthly projection, where were we on the month, but more importantly, where are we cumed to date or this is cumulative for the year? Because you could have a major expense one month, but maybe it happened early, and if you looked, if you looked at your budget, your expenses would greatly exceed the budget. But over time, that needs to average out. And if you don't have that comparison, I'll call it a comparison to par, since I'm a golfer. If you don't have that comparison to par, as you go through the year, you really don't know where you are, and that's where I'm struggling.
Maybe I can help with that.
Ms. Jarvis tried to deal with that by putting a percent column out there in that report.
I'm just thinking about that, too.
And what, that was somewhat helpful, because, you know, we were two months in, so we're 2/12, whatever percent that is.
Which is not going to be the case, because our expenses are definitely front-end heavy.
So, you could kind of say, okay, did we get 16.7 of our revenue? Did we get, you know, did we spend 16.7% of our salary budget? Get a yardstick. And that's pretty much a straight-line projection when you do that, as soon as you spend an equal amount every month, which isn't necessarily the best way to project it, but at least that's a yardstick that we can say, okay, here's where we thought we might be, your date, here's where we are. And really, what that lets us do is manage by exception. I don't want to go, I could go through all those expenses, and I could find something that I might question, but that doesn't mean that it's important. And then, if we can, if we can highlight the exceptions on these major white items, I think that that would be helpful.
I think that where the breakdown is, is what I see versus what you see. So, when you guys approve the five-year forecast, after we've sat down over months of planning to come up with all the numbers, to present to you, between all the administrators, principals, and all of the departments, we come up with the request, and that's what we build into the five years that we bring to you and when you approve. I set the budgets in the system, in our computer system, I set the budgets off of what you guys approved. So, I guess I don't worry as much of when they're buying things and the timing, because the computer does not allow them to physically enter orders that go over the budget that I put in that you approved. So, timing doesn't really matter, they can't go over that bottom line. It doesn't allow them to. It says, you're going over your appropriation line, you can't do it. So, then I either get a call, and that's when I say, it's over what you guys asked for. If you had to need something additional, you have to take it to the board. And then that's when they come to the board and they ask you for something. So, at that time, that's when I raise the appropriations after the board approves those. So, that might make you feel better, it's, they can't go over, I can't say, wow, they bought something for $500,000. They can't buy anything that wasn't approved in the five-year forecast and wasn't set in the budget for them to spend. So, I can maybe try to sit with you guys and show you how that works, to where you can see, in addition to everything I give you, how you can see that there would be no huge surprise, and you guys would be aware of everything that was being approved and why all the increases were.
I guess, so the public sees this form when they go online, and they don't have the luxury of your time or system. And I'm the public, and I think Jim made a simple point, and I don't know anything, I understand what you're saying, if it's a million-dollar appropriation, you put the million dollars in, and until they hit a million dollars in one, whatever timeframe that is, whether it's the ninth month, the 12th month, or the eighth month, it doesn't really matter, the million dollars is going to get spent, or, for some reason, there's savings, which is what you guys have done a good job of managing back to. I guess all I'm trying to say is, the public, sitting here looking at this form, and I have no inference to this, I don't know, and it might be just as simple as Jim said, we are 20% into our year, and that number is running at 21. Or we are 30% into our year, and that number is running at 26. And maybe it's just as simple as adding those two little things that would provide usefulness for me, or for the public, because they don't have this privilege.
And I can, I can do that, I can easily, I have a percent column on there, and I can do that. Here's the issue with that. We are so far behind here.
What is that?
Because of technology, the textbooks, all of the capital needs items. So, for instance, for this month alone, we're $200,000, we have paid out for, like I said in your email, a roof. That's going to come back to us in energy money when we get the financing. You guys had approved me to go ahead and purchase that out of the general fund and repay ourselves with the financing. Then we have our textbook adoptions, which you guys already approved, so those are going to inflate the expenses for those months. So, I could have said in July, okay, I'm going to set the budget up for the year, and it's going to be $10 million throughout this, throughout the month, and I'm going to set $8.5 million, $8.5, $850,000 every single month. But if you have an order that's way over for a month because of the timing of when the item was paid, I would have to then, in order for it to make sense to you, give you a list of everything that occurred in that month, timing-wise, that I didn't expect to happen in that month, that happened in a pre, you see what I mean? It's all timing, there's just no way to...
I guess, I guess for the public's purpose, the roof of $200,000 was part of the five-year forecast budget, if my memory was correct. I think that was in the capital needs report.
It's part of the capital needs.
Right, so that's covered, it's not an extra...
It's actually the roof repair, I think.
Right, so it was like $171,000, I think that my memory is correct. And the textbook adoption's been part of the five-year forecast for several years, so, just so the public doesn't take out of context where $800,000 is down.
Right, no, it was already in the five-year.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that. I guess, I'm just looking for something for me, so if you don't want to go there for me, that's okay.
No, it's not that, I just wanted to make sure whatever I provide for you, because there's an understanding there with whatever I provide for you, don't hold me to it, because unless you'd like me to hold the bills each month and say, oh, no, we told them we were going to spend $3 million, and we're up to $4, so I'm going to hold that $1 million worth of bills till next month, you just have to understand that it's never going to matter.
You're missing my need, because I understand, I've been here the third year now, I'm not as good as you by any stretch of the imagination, and there's no disrespect intended. I'm just, I know by the seventh or eighth month, you start to get some powering up, and you start doing five-year forecasting about the seventh or eighth month, usually February, March, you start looking at next year's budget, so it just starts powering up. So, I'm just, I don't need to spend a lot more time, Mr. President, I'm just simply looking for a little extra something, and if it's too much to do, that's fine, I'll figure it out.
I'll try to provide you some things, and we'll see if that is adequate.
Percentage of year and percentage spent, I think would be all I'd be asking for.
I think one of the issues that, when we're talking about percentages, is it's going to have to go back, unfortunately, to each line item in the budget.
No, no, no.
Yes, it will, because, for example, each principal has a budget with numerous line items, and there's a percentage that's spent at any given time in each line item. And each percentage, you're going to have to look at and then think about, and someone's going to have to explain why this item is 90% spent the first year in the, in the, in the fiscal year, and this line item over here is 20% spent. It goes back to the item. And I think that the percentage can be confusing, because people can become alarmed if they see early in the, in the year, a high percentage. And that's why I, I don't know, I think personally, again, this is something personally, we're looking at this too specifically. We need to kind of back off to the global, the global position, that where are we in terms of the five-year forecast, where are we expenditure, and are they relatively close? There's going to be the ups and downs. And I think that if we try to explain away every up and down, that's not going to be productive.
Well, if I could add, Mr. President, one of the things we did this year was, we pulled 50% of the building budgets into a zero-based line. So, and the reason we did that is, so once, the beginning of the year is where most of the money's spent, it's starting. But once they get into purchasing things, and they see the different instructional needs of kids, the goal was for them to sit down and understand why they're purchasing what they're purchasing to build ownership. So, just to feel that there's a million dollars there, and once we hit it, then we're alerted. No, we're watching it the whole way. Once they get into 50% of their budget, they will have to request to get that money. So, and second, one of the things that we're running into now, for example, in the area of special ed, we've had to hire a lot of people in special ed, just alone, three new eights, and I'm calculating, Tara's actually keeping track of the money and what we're doing, and then I have to come back with the explanation from the operational standpoint. And the amazing thing is, we hired no classroom teachers this year in elementary. Actually, I think we pretty much went down in one area. We hired one at the high school, which was already in the five-year forecast. All of our hiring, three eights for special ed, two special ed teachers, a school psychologist, which we're very scarce on, we hired a gifted person. So, the data that was produced, we're hiring totally aligned with that data. We're not hiring to reduce classroom sizes or anything like that. We are hiring based on need. But we're outside of our projected staffing, about a quarter of a million dollars, probably. So, we're going to bring that when we come with the October forecast to show, these are things we need. And I don't think what people get is how badly this district had been cut back over the years, and how low we were in comparison to other districts. One statistic that we actually got through the financial is that, when comparing us to Mason, per administrator, we educate 1,500 kids more. And that's just one statistic. So, we're down in a lot of areas, but yet, we're still, we moved from the top 8% to the top 7%, and we're doing that within an extremely balanced budget.
I guess to Dr. Malone's point, I'm looking at one form, Dr. Malone, it's what the board, what we're giving as a board number, I'm not looking at the principal's budget, I don't care about the principal's budgets, I'm just looking at this document that is in our board package that we've been asked to look at and review and study, it's the board actual. And I'm hoping that Tara can perhaps do a sample percentage, and if she wants to send that form to me, and you don't want to see it, and the public don't want to get it...
Probably look for something, I think what he was, what Ron was stating is that I would have to actually go and look at every single budget line item, every single budget...
For you to give an explanation.
In order for, to give an explanation to you as to the percentage that we have spent in relation to what we...
It sounds to me, just by Mr. Petrie's comment, that you're already doing that on areas that are...
Well, what I've done is, since I started here, I kind of have, I'm trying to learn how we do things here. So, I started with the May forecast update as the approved budget. And every single board meeting since May, every single resolution that was passed, I have started a spreadsheet, added who's came, who's gone, what, if there's an increase or decrease to the five-year forecast, so I have an exact figure across the board by object of where we're spending. Where, right now, we're currently down in salaries and benefits, we're up in purchased service. And that's a lot of going from in-house to outsourced. There's some things that we've added, you know, on the ESC, services that we've added, but ultimately, overall, right now, we're about $250,000 different, however. We still have not done anything with the capital needs line item, so that will be able to be adjusted as long as we don't have any other imminent needs, in order to still keep, when we come back with the five-year, in order to still keep everything aligned.
Well, if I could add to that, Tara and I meet weekly, and the last time we met, she says, you're going to have to explain to me the busing situation. I mean, we have one special ed bus, $105,000 a year, and I can say that, because I'm not saying anything illegal. We didn't have that until two days into school, for three kids to go to private schools, because we would have to hire a whole fleet of a unit to be able to provide services to certain kids. So, to do what's right for those kids and get them the education they need, that's a $100,000 expense that we did not predict.
Well, you're going to add that, so I think...
May I just make one quick comment, Mr. President? Your report that you just gave there was phenomenal. Okay, I mean, literally, you just gave a financial report of the situation of the district. It was excellent, it was succinct, it said up and down, it gave some very simple notes, it might have taken you a week or two weeks of work to get there, not more, and I apologize for that, but I presume that's, that is a great report. I don't, I can't see that.
I can provide it for you, it's something that I kind of do for myself, to keep track of everything, so that I feel I know what's going on.
Well, I believe you do, by the way.
You know, I just, I don't want there to be any surprises either, because I have to answer for those surprises as well. So, I, I could provide that to you, so that you can see that...
That's a good financial report. It's not a, I can't tell what you just said, how we're doing. These numbers don't, and this is, you're taking over a hangover here, by the way, this is an adoption of pre-you, so maybe...
Yeah, it's not the stuff I would have produced at Loveland, however, I did produce similar reports to that.
I would say, again, all I'm suggesting, since you've settled in, which is why I raised it today, not six months ago, is that that report you gave is fantastic, says you guys are watching, it tells the public you're watching, we know you're watching, I know you're watching it, this doesn't do anything for me. So, if you have some suggestions, it doesn't take too much...
It's definitely something I can share with the board each month, after the different items on the board agenda approved. It's not something that I would probably plug out on the website or anything, just because I do have a lot of information of people and where they are and all of that kind of stuff.
Whatever kind of report you're comfortable with.
But I can definitely provide that to the board.
Thank you. All I'm looking for is some different direction you can take ownership to, not that you don't own this, I mean, just, thanks.
Roll call?
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Patrani?
Yes.
Regano?
Yes.
Motion passes. And we'll move on to 3.2, approval of the permanent fiscal year 15, 2015 permanent appropriation.
These are the things that have to go to the county auditor, that we did, right when we closed the fiscal year 14, we had to do the temporary appropriations, which would get us through until the permanent appropriations have been set. So, now they're set, we have to do that at the beginning of the year, and then June 30 is set of the year, and they have to be filed by October 1st.
Okay, is there a motion?
So, there's a second?
Second.
I just have one question.
Sure.
I'm looking at the report you generated, again, the same report, the $46 million, sorry, I'm on the yellow report, budget to actual, five-year forecast, $46,680,408. That's the total expenditures in our five-year forecast.
That's the total expenditures that we have right now. I know where you're going to go, so I'll just explain. The appropriations that are set to the county, if for any reason, the board approves stuff, which we do every month, I will have to go back with board approval every single time to the county to certify a new set of appropriations. So, what you do is, and I've done it at my previous district every year, and it's been done here, I checked the previous ones to make sure that you guys did it here the same way, is is you take your cash balance on hand at the beginning of the year, your anticipated revenues, and as long as your appropriations do not go over the two combined, then you don't have to recertify till the end of the year. So, all that allows us to do is, it allows us to make decisions going forward, as long as they don't go over the appropriations that are set to the county, we're fine. It just eliminates the possibility of a citation for going over what you certified to the county that you were going to buy, spend. So, we would never spend at that level, our budgets are set, the amounts that I have to plug in are in areas that no one can touch. It's just a way for us to eliminate the twice-a-month going back and recertifying to the county auditor.
The appropriations that are set to the county. If for any reason, the board approves stuff, which we do every month, I will have to go back with board approval every single time to the county to certify a new set of appropriations. So, what you do is, and I've done it at my previous district every year, and it's been done here, I checked the previous ones to make sure that you guys do it here the same way, is as you take your cash balance on hand at the beginning of the year, your anticipated revenues, and as long as your appropriations do not go over the two combined, then you don't have to recertify till the end of the year. So, all that allows us to do is it allows us to make decisions going forward. As long as they don't go over the appropriations that are set to the county, we're fine. It just eliminates the possibility of a citation for going over what you certified to the county that you were gonna buy, spend. So, we would never spend at that level. Our budgets are set. The amounts that I have to plug in are in areas that no one can touch. It's just a way for us to eliminate the twice-a-month going back and recertifying to the county auditor.
So, by definition, we're giving you the authority at this vote?
We're giving, we're telling the county that we're not gonna spend more than that much money. I know about how much money we're allowed to spend because I use the five-year to do our budget.
So, you're saying that by voting for the forty-eight million, eight-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand six, I'm sorry, forty-nine million, ninety-five thousand, six-hundred-and-forty-four dollars, this board is not giving the authority at that level to spend?
Yeah, right. What we're doing is we're telling the county auditor that as a board, we will not be spending more than that forty-eight million dollars. I know, and you guys know, we're not gonna spend anywhere near that. It's just a way, it's all paperwork. And it's just a way that you have to keep continuously going back to the county auditor every time something else happens. So, if I give them that number that's on the five-year, forty-six, six-eighty, and then he comes to you guys at the next board meeting and tells that you, that he needs a new special ed teacher, you guys can authorize it, but I'm not allowed to pay. I'm not allowed to authorize the expenditures. I'm not allowed to authorize the expenditures until I come back at a separate board meeting, get a new resolution to certify to the county auditor that we're increasing the appropriations. At that time that I send it to the county auditor and it's approved, then I'm allowed physically to go into the system and raise the appropriations. So, in order to eliminate us having to do that, every time the board makes a decision at a board meeting of something that might not have been already accounted for, we set them high so that we don't have to go through that process. But like I said, it doesn't mean that we're gonna spend forty-eight million. It just means that we set them up high enough to where we would never have to worry about getting a citation for going over.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Patroni?
Yes.
Regano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Four point one, policy revision, second reading. This is bylaw zero five, zero one five seven. Spit it out this evening. If you looked at that policy, basically on the second page, separated sentence says, "Members of the Warner County JDSD appointed under this policy shall be resident of the Springbrough Community City School District." That's the line that's been added. Everything else stayed the same, which complies with all the law.
Is there a motion?
Seven.
There's a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Patroni?
Yes.
Regano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next, I apologize, I don't have my glasses in. Well, I didn't need it in that bad. Approval of donation, four hundred and seventy-four dollars, sixty-three cents from Target's Take Charge Education Program for Dennis Elementary.
Is there a motion?
Seven.
There's a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Patroni?
Yes.
Regano?
Yes.
Four point three, approval of donation for textbook from the Pearson Company. And basically what this is, they in short sent us all these copies at free of charge so that we would have what we needed in all of our high school math classes. And my assumption, in the event our technology programs don't work, would that be accurate?
We have some additional books that, yes, that were, that were sent to us kind of at free of charge. But we want to accept the donation. And we have those available to our, for our teachers, for our students.
That was a huge amount of money that they donated.
Yeah, yeah.
Is there a motion?
Seven.
Second?
Second.
Hey, can I just ask a question? They bid on selling us books, I guess, or we went through something where we looked at different vendors. And now we're getting a gift from a vendor who bid.
No, it's not a gift.
Donation is not a?
We've had some issues from time to time. And basically, we're doing our due diligence and making sure what we, what you approved for us to purchase is being spent wisely. Therefore, they're supplying what we need to make sure that we're within their capacity.
I'm not challenging you at all. I'm just, so if I was the roofing contractor and I gave a ten-thousand-dollar donation to something, would there be any conflicts or any issues that come out? Is all I'm asking because we have a six-hundred-plus-thousand-dollar purchase and a subsequent Value X gift. And you just said it's a lot. It looks like it's a hundred thousand dollars worth of gifts.
Part of it is to get what we purchased to work in every way possible, which is what they guarantee. So, you know, there has been some direct discussions about when kids get home, if the site doesn't work, you know, either this is gonna work or we're gonna talk refunds. So, they've done what they need to do to make sure that our needs are met. However, this has to come in the form of a donation.
I mean, again, I'm.
Sammy, would you like?
Some of this is, is, they have provided us with additional books, but some of it is an error on their part. They sent additional books to us, books that we have adopted. And so, they, we have said, "No, we don't, that's not what we purchased." They said then that we would like to go ahead and donate because that would also give you some additional books. And so, we're coming forward to provide that. So, while there are some books that are definitely what we had asked for, there are additional books that they, it was an oversight on their part that they had sent additional books. So, it's almost like a duplicating of an order to some degree. And that's why those additional books are in our hands. But it allows, well, we're wanting to accept the donation because they are the exact books that we have adopted.
Again, I'm not challenging, but that's, there's four hundred books here if they're a hundred dollars a book. It's, I, it just feels, looks, I mean, there's been accusations of less visible type things that might be considered odd.
This is not, this is not unusual. I mean, let me rephrase that. The book companies will send you an enormous amount. We've got, if you go downstairs in our, at central office, we have got a slew of materials that are sent to us and they will send that for evaluation purposes. So, this is not unusual for book companies to provide material, additional materials for review, for various people to take a look at. So, it's not necessarily, I mean, I hear what you're saying, but it's not unusual for book companies to do something not of that magnitude, but to, and it's, some of that is an oversight on their part.
Well, in addition to this, they've had to supply extra staff on their end. The guy, they've come here, met with, we had over a hundred parents here a couple of weeks ago. Pearson Company was here to actually talk with them about anything that's going wrong so that we can make sure that we get it right. So, I would say it's even more the books. I mean, we never agreed to have some of their staff make sure they were on-site to make sure everything works either, but they've also put that in free of charge.
You know, one of the things that we had, when we spoke to various companies is that we're really trying to work very hard to have partnerships as opposed to dropping the books off and, you know, thanking for your order. So, you know, it's really refreshing. And they're not the only company that has done that. So, it's not just a, you know, let's sell the product and, you know, and come on board. So, that partnership, we're, that's huge to us right now because, you know, there's a lot of materials that takes and requires some professional development that doesn't necessarily come with, with just teachers being able to get their hands on books. So, that development, I think, is very important as we move forward.
The books here are Algebra, Trigonometry, Recalc, Calculus, Algebra II. Do we have hard copy backups for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math? These were all math books. We have backups for the.
Some of those don't have the best, have the math books. They don't have books necessarily. They have the student books, which they have those, the resource material. Those are in the classrooms already. And those were there from even last year. There's a student book.
I'm sorry, maybe I went clear. I thought that one of the reasons that we had these hard copies that were accepted with donation was because they were backup to the electronic books that we adopted. And so, we have backups here for Algebra, Trig, Recalc, Calculus, Algebra II. My question was, do we have backups for the eighth grade, sixth, seventh, eighth grade math and the English language?
No, not for those. We have what was ordered. Again, these were something they sent us extra.
But we do have hard copies for those, I guess is my question.
We have the resources. If they have a hard copy.
Yes.
Would you like to explain? I can explain, but.
Well, go ahead.
Where they have a textbook, they have a textbook. If it's more of a resource manual, they have a resource manual. If it's more of a workbook, they have a workbook. It just all depends on which section.
Okay, but there's, there is a hard copy backup of all of those electronic materials, at least to some degree.
Yes.
In the event that the electronic system didn't work, we'd have some recourse to continue on. That's my question. Because if these were just high school math. Okay, and then refresh my recollection. Did we adopt Calculus as part of that books program? It seems to me that we did not. Calculus.
There were two books that were additional, correct? That were sent as oversights.
Stats is not part of the adoption. We use a different company called Sendgate for stats. The AP Calculus is through a different one, yes. But they are using the Math Excel program in AP Calculus. So, the Excel is the online edition, which is also used throughout the students if they go online post-secondary.
So, the Calculus book that we're receiving, is that the same Calculus book that we're using in class?
Yes.
But understand, though, I mean, any of our teachers, if they want to pull a different book or, all the materials they use are not books that the board always approves. Our teachers are very artful and they go out and get information off the internet or whatever based on the engagement of their kids. So, I mean, we have a lot of resources that our teachers use, not just a book. We should talk about that, I'll play. That's just artful teaching this day and time. We don't teach the textbook. We teach the curriculum.
Well, I just think that it's a, it's a real positive step, a positive move that we have these materials because the conversion that we've made this year has been a major, a major move on our part. And I'm glad that, that we have every available resource provided to us to make it successful. So, Pearson's goal and our goal was the same in the sense of having a successful math, math adoption, math program. And having these additional materials helps us achieve that goal. Sometimes you can get into a situation where, where the school doesn't have what they need and has to go and do negotiating and buy additional items. And this, to me, is a very positive thing to help us be successful with our conversion to this program.
It's not unusual for us to take a look at some addition, even through an adoption, to provide some additional resources where there potentially is a gap. And when, and, because no, no one textbook, and they'll be the first to admit that they're, they are not all-inclusive, you know, a hundred percent. So, there may be some additional resources that need to come into, you know, the hands of the teachers in order to achieve the objective, especially when you are working with, you know, advanced learners. And, you know, again, that's, that comes with the evaluation process, but then also that, that need that the teacher has for any given subject area. So, there are resources other than the book.
Well, actually, all of our instructional strategies challenge teachers that tap into background knowledge and student interest. That, I mean, if there's an article tonight in the newspaper that's related to the discussion they had today, they're gonna bring that in. I mean, that's just, the more we can get kids engaged, better.
So, with that, several call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Patroni?
Yes, just note that it's based on no issues of conflict or ethics. Otherwise, I'm good with the idea. I'm on it.
Regano?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The human resource personnel, Ms. Vincent is all the men. She's actually back to work. She stayed as long as she can, but we're glad to have her back. Glad she's making a successful recovery here, Anderson. This is for approval of personnel items as presented by the superintendent.
Is there a motion?
Seven.
There's a second?
Second.
Seven. Question? Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Patroni? Regano?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item six point one, is that you?
That's me. This would be approval of student services and private placement contracts.
Is there a motion?
Seven.
There's a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just an educational question. And from my level of knowledge, I don't know when you say a hundred and five thousand dollars to transport, is that a special vehicle, something special?
It is. It goes all the way to Van De.
It's a regular bus. I mean, it's just, it's one of the smaller buses. It's a regular bus. But because of how far it runs, I mean, we're running three kids all the way to Van De and to Trumpet School in Fairwood. So, it's traveling a lot. So, once you count the aides on the bus, the bus driver, the bus, the miles, the gas, it's expensive.
And that doesn't take into consideration when it's part of the school.
So, just on one of the contracts, just curious, so Senior Assistance, Inc., that's this company that transports for us, is that, but it's like a forty thousand dollar. It says Senior Assistance, Inc., individual group transportation estimate. So, it's a third party. It's not us. Just looking for understanding. I'm under the, I think it's a student services contract that was the first attachment. I just opened it up. Has one item that shows sixty-two thousand, nine hundred dollars in cost. Just presuming that student, senior assistance.
It is, it is for. There are a lot of different companies. UTS is another company that transports kids. And depending on where the school's at, sometimes they service to certain ones. And when we get into IUPs, there's not one thing we can say about.
So, we don't, so we don't do this in-house? We have to contract with people that actually have.
Correct.
Sort of private individuals.
Group transportation for forty thousand is probably a much better deal. I mean, you saw the cost of the buses and what we get miles on it. But highway patrol sidelines, even the newest of buses, based on mileage. So, we have to be very cognizant of how far we're traveling. And then we get into is that a reasonable route of travel based on how long it takes to get the kids to and from, which we run multiple times this year.
There's, I guess I just, this is taxpayer dollars going to a third party for contracted services, basically, right?
Right, that would be purchase services. That's why, that's why that's increasing.
Like our purchase services budget technically is all third parties. Is that almost accurate where it's some third-party?
I would say it's very accurate.
A portion. There's also utilities in there, which is a huge.
Consider the ESC as a third party, which I kind of do.
Yeah, all of our services and, you know.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, but this is the one area that since the three years I've been here, we're hanging on this year. I mean, it has just spiraled out of control to some extent. And it's what we have to do legally.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Patroni?
Yes.
Regano?
Yes.
Motion passes. Item seven point one, approval of the building usage for Springbrough Intermediate PTO to use Wade Field.
All right, PTO would like to use Wade Field for a walk-upon.
And that's after school hours.
That's after school hour.
Is there a motion?
Seven.
There's a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Anderson?
Yes.
Malone?
Yes.
Patroni?
Yes.
Regano?
Yes.
Motion passes. Board member reports, any comments, Mr. Patroni?
Yes. No, you don't have to. You don't have to. Because no speech prepared for this evening, but no extensive list of questions. I just reflect on our last meeting and we had a little bit of discussion about the two-hundred-and-fifty thousand or so dollars that we, that we have flowing out to community schools' open enrollment for students who are choosing not to enroll at Springbrough. And I know you were doing some, planning to do some research as to why that might be. I think I have some ideas why that might be. I'm not going to get into it tonight, but we're, it's the time. Give me a call and I, I'd be happy to.
You did bring up about the Freedom Tribe. I hope I just called it the right terminology. Nonetheless, I did check with Mr. Mark. He was going to be here tonight, but ended up having another engagement that he had to cover. But they are looking at a wall wrap. Actually, they're working on side effects on it for the wall. They've been working on it for a while and then the, the different pieces will go on that. So they actually are going to have a digital image of that, so we'll get it together. They already have the wall and everything picked out. It's actually really fun. They showed it to me and I thought, wow, that exceeded the expectation. So it turned out very nice.
Are you allowed to divulge what wall they're looking at a little?
To be honest with you, Mr. Patoni, when I go in the high school, I try to find the same wall each time to find my way out. It's tough. It's tough though. I call it, I go down into the center of the spider web and hope I pick the right letter. But it's, it's such a big building, it's easy to get lost there. The kids will send me down by the pool for some reason, I've been walking.
Malone, do you have any comments?
This afternoon, the district dedicated the Sandra Gray Library at SI and it was a very nice affair. And again, it's just very appropriate, very deserving, and the actual dedication and naming occurred this afternoon.
And that will be on our website and on Facebook.
Very nice. Just passed out a couple of things, being on the, you're appointed member to the Warren County Career Center Board. They're having a levy and they haven't had an approval of the levy, operating levy since nineteen ninety and...
Oh, good.
The building, so they, you know, I'd say they've been pretty good stewards of the taxpayers' money and their, their commitment is that they want to go an equal amount of time, another twenty-five years before they ask for a levy. The building, it was built in nineteen seventy-four, as the brochure tells you, and it's, needs a lot of improvements, enhancements besides the room size being so small, built back in nineteen seventy-four. So, so they would ask for everyone's support and we have, we have, we have a nice career center and a lot of good programs, programs there to prepare people for, for vocations after school.
Yeah, I didn't know they were running a levy, but if, if I could say just a couple of things about the career site?
No, you...
They, I, I will tell you, they have such great foresight in what they're providing for kids in terms of college and career readiness. I've met with them and they blow me away with the alternatives they have for kids in that building. So I have to tell you, that, that institution's doing an outstanding job in the way that they're addressing the future needs, twenty-first century for, for their students. They really are very impressed. I'm glad to be affiliated with them, that our kids get the opportunity to go there if they choose not, not to go here or if they want to go more of a technical career-based program.
Well, in the brief time I've been on it, in the old days, I was on it back in the late nineties and, and it's a whole lot different now than it was, was then. It was, you know, what kind of cookies or cake are you going to get that they make that day? And today, it's very, I'm sure it's very, very important and very business-oriented and, and they're, they're preparing these students for, whether it's firefighters, plumbers, welders, law enforcement. I, they do a nice job.
That's right, they do. That's right, they do.
And one thing I wasn't aware of, that they have, how many, how many, what's their influence here in Springboro? I know I caught you off guard, but it's...
That's a great question.
But they teach, they have their teachers and...
Oh, they, they do. They have some of their teachers on-site.
Right.
That, oh wow, I...
Digital art?
They have digital art, they have...
Project Lead the Way.
Project Lead the Way, which is super, and some of our top AP kids are in that. Then they also have, I wanted to say it's a life and learning class, I think, so Dr. Moore, you probably know better.
Well, the, the Home Economics Program is a satellite program. The, the addition of the Digital Media Arts, there's a, I'm not sure what they call it program now, but it was basically computer design, software programming and that kind of thing.
And all those classes are full.
And so, I think there's three or four programs at least that are housed in our building.
I, they, I know that, I knew the number of students they affected, but it's amazing. They're in Little Miami, Kings, Lebanon...
Well, I do know just in the, the life learning, it's almost two-hundred-and-twenty kids. And each of those digital art classes would have thirty kids. So it's, I'd say it's four or five hundred kids.
Those are vocational teachers on their payroll?
And our kids go and just maybe to that class one time a day, but since it's on campus, they don't have the week to go there.
Right. And the other thing that was, and they're getting, having the fortune of sitting around a room, a boardroom with other people, the young man that was killed in Little Miami in the car accident. It's amazing that, I think Kings took, teachers took food over for their teachers the day of the funeral. I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a nice part of a unifying presence in Warren County. Warren County, as big as it's gotten, in a lot of ways still has that small town. So, that was nice to see. So, anyway, and our condolences certainly go out to Little Miami and, I should say that, and all their tragedy, just like we had a couple of years ago.
Correct.
So unfortunately, it happens. So with that, moving on to public announcements, any public announcements? How did the...
Football team?
Well, no, the football team won, but they kind of readjusting where people, students and everybody stands and...
You know, I did not get one.
And you were gone, so...
Complaint. We, we were doing the bond rating and, well, the high school administrators stayed in contact with me, but they wanted someone to blame if they didn't go well. Watch that, that's the job of a high school president, blame superintendent. But it went very well, to be perfectly honest. But I will tell you, we have a, a good group of administrators that they do take into account feelings of the kids when we make these decisions. And I think a lot of times, it's not the change, it's how you handle the change. And they've done a really nice job of that. Plus, we had the majority of our administrators there. We're having our elementary administrators now, they are required to attend the, the football games as well because we're getting just as many elementary kids as we get high school kids coming to these games. So we've had record crowds this year and a lot of fun, a lot of parents, a lot of spirit from the kids. It's just a lot of fun.
Nice experience.
It is. It's a lot of fun. That's great for our kids.
Yep.
Future considerations?
With that, none being heard, we'll convene for work session. It's going to take three minutes?
Committee reports. I think John reported last time. We haven't had any, we canceled policy, we was out, but I think next Friday we have budget funding. And all of the committee meeting dates are on superintention.
I think we have the student engagement meeting this Thursday.
This Thursday at two-thirty, yes, we do. And we're going to get feedback from our kids on their thoughts, on the ebooks, how things are going, what we can improve, and then we give that feedback directly back to Pearson County, adjust as necessary.
Okay, eleven point two, discussion of teacher requests for student trampolines.
Yes, actually, Mr. President, eleven point two through eleven point five is the same thing. What this is, we have teachers who, if they get enough students, are going to travel with the kids and be their guide to, let's see here, England, Morocco, France, Italy, it's a good place to be a, a student, that's for certain. But ba, basically what this entails is the teachers will accept a voucher for doing these and the board will have to accept that voucher and then allow the teacher that because it is, could be a voucher for airline miles or seven hundred dollars or something like that. But we've done these in the past and I do have copies of each of the things that the kids are signed up on and so forth. But they're done through private tour companies, everything is set up through there. And we've done these for quite a while now. Kids really like it, starting to remember, they turn up.
Is it all seniors?
Anyone in the high school that wants to attend.
Okay.
And the parents do pay for it. It's nothing that comes out of general fund. It's something the teachers do in the summer on their own time.
All right. So we'll move on to eleven point six then?
Yes, eleven point six. And we, actually, I have held off on this for about a year. And what we would like to do, we, we need team leaders for the area of special ed at Five Points Elementary, Dennis Elementary, Springboro Elementary and their Springboro Intermediate and the Junior High. Basically, what this person is going to do is work with just the special ed teachers after school hours, sometimes before school, sometimes during the day, his or her plan, if that's necessary, to check IUPs that special ed teachers are doing because they changed some of the forms this year and our funding is directly tied to those forms for compliance. And I have to tell you, we spend out a lot more money on non-compliance than we will for these team leaders, which will come at a cost of about eighty-five hundred dollars. These people will also serve as liaisons between the teachers, the special ed teams at each building, and our district representatives that, for special education, and also they'll be responsible for providing professional development before school and after school with special ed teachers. And I have to tell you right now, special ed is definitely one area. I think we sent out the report, pardon me, we did receive a D in the area of gifted and we're going to go over this more as we talk. Even though we increased, we passed all twenty-four indicators and did very well, the specific data that we've been monitoring for three years now, we knew was going to be that. And we had a C in, in special ed and an F in addressing the needs of our bottom twenty percent of our students. The problem is, the bottom twenty percent of the students, if we don't have the things in place to figure out who perhaps needs to be special ed, that's why you end up there. So in order for us to do that, we have to get more specific in what we're doing. And we're trying to take that step by step. A lot of districts make the mistake of, they just go buy all these staff and then figure out what to do with them. We're putting plans in place and then measuring progress along the way to determine when we need to hire someone. And just this year in special ed alone, we've hired two special ed teachers, three educational aides and a school psychologist, so we're seeing where we need to add. So these people will specifically help. They've had this at the high school for years, hugely beneficial because they help with planning and I've actually met with the team leaders myself to do budgeting a time or two because they work directly with the teachers.
So this is eighty-five hundred dollars for...
For all of them. Yeah. So that's for Five Points, Dennis, Springboro Intermediate, the Junior High. And I would like to add, my first year we did an efficiency plan and I reduced a lot of the supplemental contracts with the intent, we would use that money as Turner and I cost them. With the savings on preschool, now it's all blended into the five-year forecast, we're getting to where this is something we need to add. It never was reduced, we never had it, but it's something we definitely need, which, when you really want to look at things, we never had someone in special ed making sure they're accountable, yet it is our lowest area, one of our lowest areas. And it's the same with gift, we've been deficient in those areas for years. So right now, we're, we have a focus on addressing our true needs.
So, so who, who is this person?
These are teachers.
And what's their qualification to do all this special ed? Are they experts in special ed or they get...
They have a special ed degree.
And so that means they're in line with all the rules and regulations?
Correct. And they'll, they are required to attend many meetings with our special ed people to make sure that the buildings are in compliance.
So we have that many, so this is a special ed teacher that we currently employ, that we would add on more duties to them, is that the...
Yeah, because it's after the work hours.
It's a special ed teacher that we currently employ that we should be extending their work day? Is that the...
Correct. Because they're going to take on extra roles, responsibilities outside of their current job, I'm sure. Keep in mind, we're over seven hundred students right now in IUPs in our district.
Just trying to get clarity on the person who's getting those extra, the supplementals, if it's an existing person who's working in that field, that's all.
Correct. There's no health benefits or anything come with that because they're already there. So it's eighty-five hundred dollars for all four buildings.
Total eighty-five hundred?
Pardon?
Total eighty-five hundred? Or eighty-five hundred per building?
Total for all four buildings together. So we're looking at roughly twenty, one, two, or something, twenty-two hundred dollars a building.
You really, I mean, I, I certainly think these are necessary. You, you need a coordinator, someone to tie all, all these special ed teachers in a given building together, and that's what the high school special ed leader does, works, does to coordinate the activities, the IUPs, works on the schedule. And so when you've got so many special ed teachers, you, you need a person in each building to do that coordination, that tying of that program together in that building.
I mean, our high school special ed team leader, she'll just up and come in in the middle of the summer when they have an issue with the schedule, has to find a babysitter and everything. I mean, it is certainly not lucrative for some of these people and the time they spend there. We're the ones getting the good deal out of it. I hate it for them because they get stressful, but no, these, these people, they know what they're doing. And a lot of these people are where we look for our administrative pool when it comes time to replace administrative positions.